Okay, our third item announcements. A announced the August 2021, 2024 public hearing at 5:30 PM for Chapter 112 zoning and Chapter 66, short-term rentals. B announced purpose of the executive session scheduled for August 21st. That is legal matters related to our public hearing tomorrow night. Item four, common suggestion petitions by residents in attendance regarding items that are not on the agenda. Mr. Cook?
Daryl Cook, South Orange Street. Does Westchester have plans on how to handle 60 cubic feet of water when West Ocean removes the dam on Montgomery Avenue?
I don't know the answer to that, but we will, uh, we'll find out from Mr. Anderson. Okay, item five, reports and presentations. First one being the Westchester Community Campus Semester Report to Borough Council by Dr. Julie Dietrich and Mr. Don Bracelet.
Good evening, I'm reporting out on behalf of Mr. Bracelet and myself this evening about the achievements from the spring semester. So if you remember how we're reporting out is achievements, things in process, and then next steps. So with the spring semester, we had a move-out give-back where it impacted 50 properties and we had 230 donated items, pieces of furniture that went to the community warehouse project. That was something that we started recently and glad to say that that seems productive and thanks to our colleagues in Public Works that worked with us on that. The other, um, one of the other key achievements is my colleague and I from the university, Dr. Lexi McCarthy, presented a paper with Jordan Norley that was establishing a sustainable approach to campus and community partnership. So it was a big deal that it was accepted by the International Town Gown Association indeed as a model. So to get it selected and then go and present that at the University of Maryland, not only that, I think, to do that in tandem, but also to have the university support my colleague and I, and I want to thank Sean Metrick and the mayor who, the mayor also attended. So it was pretty cool that you have a former and current mayor that did that, so, so thank you. And then with the onboarding, the coming in of Chief Lee and Sally Sluk, we did from the university meet in general, but also specifically to make sure that those individuals were aware of the work of the committee and answer any questions that they might have. And then another thanks to our dear Bill Ratu, we had a nice feature article on the achievements of the committee from the last time that I reported out. Some things in process, we're working to identify the location of bike racks, both at the university and in the borough to help eliminate, you know, let me rephrase that, to really optimize an opportunity for those that ride bikes to have a place to put them and if there are bikes left, to get them donated. We're also working on, um, we want to work with Sally and she's aware of this and as appropriate, the committee definitely wants to be supportive of understanding the property owner points program. And then something else with the disruptive conduct reports to help make sure that, I think that would be again mutually beneficial to both the university and the borough if we made sure that we were getting those reports and I think would help with student accountability. And we do have the Center for Community Solutions, we're employing students and actually the Center for Community Solutions is housed within my office. So we employ students to work on community projects and we have two with the borough. One with the administration on helping to get accurate student rental property data, again mutually beneficial for us moving forward. And then also, and then we have three students that are being paid to work on that. So that's going to be a process and their sensitivities around housing, but we're trying to get to some of the foundation of some of the challenges that that can generate. The other project is with Keith and the Department of Parks and Recreation, in particular around the 225th anniversary and we have a student working with him in that regard. This upcoming Friday, we have our second Welcome to the Borough event, so that's four to eight. Please, please, please come and support. We do have the mayor coming from four to six, Rami photos, we have the Chester County History Center, we're doing some tours. We're using the Chester County History Center as a resource fair for students. We're providing a shuttle to get the students in and out. We're working, um, again, a thank you to Dave March and helping to make sure that EMS, fire, and police have an opportunity to recruit and also engage in the community. Activation zone, so there's a lot there and I have flyers if someone's interested in learning more or certainly contact me. Some next steps, one of the things that especially as we had some new people coming in and we want to hold ourselves accountable, we, and some measurables around that, we identified priority projects and then ranked them via survey to that cohort. So we have that where we're, you know, assigning, well, not assigning as much as individuals where they feel like they have the most value to those. We have five for the academic year, um, projects and then measurables outcomes that were again helping to hold everyone accountable on those. So I won't use the space to do that, but if anyone's interested in what the five are and how we're, uh, again measuring that engagement and what we hope to accomplish, more than happy to share that. We have two events coming up, one with a meet and greet, you might have seen something go out on that, which is August 25th from two to four at Ruston Park. So again, that's borough neighbor, just as it says, a meet and greet. And then we also have on September 8th at two in Asplin Hall. We're really focusing on students, sports captains, Greek life, presidents. So it's student-based, but we have some of the committee members serving as panelists on that. Again, to help with intentionality around how we work together in the community. And then lastly, we have the president, vice president of Student Affairs, both of whom are new, and, uh, vice president for University Advancement and External Affairs coming to an upcoming meeting. So it was a request of the committee in particular to meet with the president and incoming new Student Affairs VP. So we are honoring that and we're getting them on board. So I tried to keep it short and sweet, if you have any questions, you know how to reach me.
Thank you, any questions? Appreciate it, great updates, thanks. Okay, 5B, 5 North Adams Street zoning matter.
Mr. President, if I may, just before we get started, for the benefit of council, Borough Council, the applicant is coming today to give you a brief introduction of what the project is about and there's no matter before council to make a decision on. At your September meeting, uh, we'll be able to make a decision on whether we direct the solicitor or not to attend the zoning hearing and what we would instruct the solicitor to do in that matter. But we thought it prudent to have the applicant come and familiarize council with the project and the issues that are at hand with the pending zoning hearing. So that's why Brian Nagel and the team are here tonight.
Thank you, Sean, good evening, members of council, Brian Nagel on behalf of the development team for the redevelopment of the Adams Street property. Uh, as you may know, as Sean alluded to, um, we have a special exception application that's pending with the zoning hearing board and that will be reviewed by you next month before it goes to, in front of the zoning hearing board. This month, we just wanted to come and provide an overview of the project, which entails the redevelopment of the property that's across, obviously across the street from where we are here at Borough Hall, uh, that fronts on Gay, Adams, and Market Streets. I think you're all familiar with it. The proposal is for a 329-unit apartment and retail mixed-use project that's permitted by right by your ordinances. The project also falls squarely within the goals of your comprehensive plan to revitalize, and you'll hear a little bit about this during our slide presentation, um, to revitalize the CS district as a more pedestrian-friendly part of the borough rather than primarily automobile equipment and, um, fast food retail. Uh, that's one of the goals in your comp plan. You'll hear a lot tonight about the benefits that stem from this project and we think and hope that you'll agree that this project is not just something that should be approved as permitted by your ordinances, but also as a project that's worthy of your support. It will at last get the subject property beneficially redeveloped and go towards establishing the envisioned gateway to the borough, save a lot of taxpayers' dollars, and also drive a lot of dollars to, uh, the borough. We will welcome your questions and comments, uh, but as Sean mentioned, there's no action required by council tonight. So with that, I'm going to introduce Pete Stas and, and we'll kind of go back and forth and Denny How is with us tonight to talk a little bit about these subjects.
Thank you, good evening. Is there, does that point to? All right, okay. Great, thank you. So, um, we're going to try to keep this relatively brief, but, um, uh, I just wanted to introduce a few, uh, the team members. The, on the development side, um, there's three parties involved, Core Development, which I think most of you are familiar with, with some of the projects we've been doing in town. Then you have the Michaels Organization, which I'll talk about in a minute, and then Gunner Properties, um, they've been in town for decades. They own the site and they're participating in the development of it. Uh, and then of course our project team, um, which speaks for itself, we did not put Benarden on there, not purposely. We just have space on the page and they're not here, but they're going to be involved with it, so. Michaels, uh, just a brief intro on them, but, um, they're nationwide, they're out of Camden, uh, New Jersey. Many of their executives are local to, um, Chester County, Delaware County, Philadelphia area. And they've been around for 50 years, um, a very large company. But we've, we met them around five years ago and have, really were enticed to them by their reputation. But as we got to know the people that work there, that's really why we're working with them. And really the collective development team with, brings a broad knowledge with their knowledge, our knowledge, and the Gunners' knowledge, um, and a local community, understanding what the community wants and needs because of the locality of Core and the Gunner folks. Uh, Brian's going to talk about these couple slides.
So like I said, I think you're, I think you're familiar with the, with the site conditions, but just a brief overview. There you can see, uh, looking, looking down at, at the site and they've kind of highlighted it so you can see where the, where the boundaries of the development property are located. Here's a view, obviously looking as you're coming down Gay Street towards Borough Hall, which would come up on your right and on your left. Obviously, this is what we have today and really this doesn't even reflect, if you look out there today, there's a lot more equipment. You've got unstabilized ground, um, there along Market Street where they store a lot of equipment behind the Knox facility that's there. Uh, this is a little bit further down Market Street. On the other side of this intersection, obviously you have the, um, the Memorial, um, Pocket Park that's here on the borough property. This is opposite of that corner, um, and we all know that this has been used for, um, Christmas tree sales, fireworks sales and things like that off and on from year to year for quite a long time. Here you have a view, um, around, you can kind of see at the top image, you can see obviously the, the automobile service, service shop that's fronts on Adams Street and some of that that continues up Adams Street as you head north towards Borough Hall. And then you can see, starting down, further down Market Street, uh, in both pictures, and there you see the, the corner of the automobile repair and the buggy wash. So that's just kind of an overview of what's there today that we're trying to, um, redevelop. Yeah, okay. Oh, this is what I was, this is what I referred to, uh, in the introduction. On the left, the smaller print is taken directly from your comprehensive plan. And you can see, I won't go through all of it, but if, if you read through this and you can see, um, the recommendations of the, the changes that were made to the CS district that allow this project. They wanted to discourage, discourage new single-purpose audio auto-oriented and fast food retail services, complete tree and streetscape improvements, enhance the overall appearance. And you'll see as we go through the development project slides that this accomplished, this project would accomplish all of that. And then we, we have kind of a summary and, and an important theme here and obviously I think council understands this kind of a project at this location is going to enhance and elevate the whole surrounding real area. So we would expect that all of the surrounding retail, um, would, would rise up as a result of this project. You, you would have a new host of, um, borough residents who would be in this area, who would be there to utilize those services, thereby forcing those services to elevate and, and meet the needs in addition to creating this awesome pedestrian corridor, both on Gay Street and Market Street that would, that would be the start of accomplishing the vision that was, that was developed by the folks who wrote the comprehensive plan and by Borough Council when it adopted the zoning. This is the, this is Commercial Service District HO 75, you're familiar with the different HO districts in the borough. We've had a few projects come under those, uh, this is under the HO 75, 329 units, as I said, 5,000 square feet anticipated of retail. And as you know, there's a portion of the site alone Market Street that does lie within the floodplain. Today, there's, um, automobile service and the buggy wash and some of those buildings are in the floodplain today. Fiscal impact, we've talked a little bit about this previously, but to the borough alone, it amounts to almost $800,000 annually between the property taxes and the borough's share of the earned income tax. So that's, that's annual, almost $800,000 to the borough. And then in addition to that, with very few, very few school students, you're looking at over $800,000 to the schools, additional funds also to the county. And then you've got one-time fees all the way over on the right totaling almost $3 million just for the development of the, the project.
We don't have a lot, really enough time to walk through the whole building, but I'll just try to give you a summary. We tried to make this as simple as possible, we will have a rendering at some point. But thi- this is a, a pretty simple way to look at it, this would be your first, this would be at the ground level. And you would have an amenity area, a proposed retail area, which is proposed at 5,000 square feet. There's actually an entrance off of Gay Street here, which goes up into upper, upper, upper level parking, which I'll show you in a second. And then you have, this is accessed off of Market Street with all this parking here. And then you'd have this, uh, we'll, we'll go over this later, but the open courtyard and, um, a number of different amenities around the building. All this parking is shielded, um, so it'll appear as a building, uh, on the outside, so it's not a surface lot. And then, um, of, of course, we have about 17,000 square foot of amenity, including this open courtyard, which is about 14,000 square feet. This would be kind of the shape of the building as you get to the upper floors. We do have, there's, there's a few levels of parking on the second and third floor and then when you get to these upper floors, you have this courtyard and residential above. And then we would have 383 spots, including that ground level and then the structured parking above. I'll just actually, actually show you on here real quick, this, this would be our loading area right here. And when you go to here, this is just a snapshot of it. You would, it would be all off-street loading for the moving, the, um, the, for any moving vehicles, trash. We'll have room for, it's about 50 feet of width there, 50 to 60 feet of width. So you'll be able to get, you know, the Amazon trucks in there, mail people, maybe a visitor spot. So all that will be off of Market Street, all off-street and tucked away. In regards to parking, um, as we've already completed a traffic study, a parking study, or, um, so we have a, a letter produced by Matt Hammond and TPD. And this is kind of a summary of that. We applied the dense Maltese urban setting and utilized the ULL shared parking, which is suggested in the borough ordinance, which would require 343 parking spots, we have 383, which would suggest you have a surplus of 40 spots. The other thing I would mention is on Market and Gay Street, on the frontage of our property, we have ample off-street parking. So there's, uh, just, just on those two blocks, there's 20, 23, 24 spots just on our frontage. If you go across the street, obviously there's more. Um, this is just a summary of some of the architectural elements at the ground level. You have a plaza here, um, the urban park and the linear rain garden. Grab my notes here, on the, so, so this is a design that was done by the Tree Commission in 2022, 2021. And it was, I think it was approved, um, through the planning commission and then Borough Council, but this was a proposed linear park. And if that's Borough Hall right there and this would be our site here and they proposed a linear park there. And again, the, the whole idea behind this was to beautify the gateway into the borough, um, make it more pedestrian-friendly, that, all the things tied back to the comp plan. So what we're proposing is a linear garden on this side. So this is the shape of our building here, there's Borough Hall. This would be a linear park, which we would call it a linear rain garden, uh, park, uh, because that is in the floodplain. So we think it's a really appropriate place to put it. And that, just to kind of give you a perspective, that, that's, uh, about 8,000 square feet of space. This is, uh, the plaza across the street, it would mirror the, the Memorial Park, which is right on the corner here. And that, these are just some inspirational images of what that could look like, activate the space, again, make it pedestrian-friendly. And then we're, we're calling this an urban park. Again, this is a, a pretty sizable space, um, this would be right up against Borough Hall and obviously we would green it and make it, um, pedestrian-friendly and also put all kinds of interesting things in there, whether it's art or, um, lots of seating, et cetera, so.
Pete, we would work with the Tree Commission on, on, on the tree elements of both of this.
Yep, yep. Um, and then this is, this would be, uh, a common area provided to the tenants of the building, but this is the space, it's about 14,000 square feet, it's in the courtyard. Below that, we would actually have all our stormwater and, um, stormwater management for the new construction of the building. But, um, above that, we would have greening and, and lots of things for our tenants. And this would be Denny.
Thanks Pete, good evening everybody, my name's Denny Howe with Howe Engineering, you're probably used to seeing Joe here, not me, that, they don't let me out that much, but, um, we have studied the floodplain that exists, and I've done this a few times for this project. I'm sure the borough knows this section of Goose Creek, where's the button here that's?
Just the forward and back there.
Forward and backward, but which one does the pointer? On the top? Should be the pointer, Brian. Right there, I got it, I got you, I got you. Um, we've, we've studied this floodplain a number of times, as, as the borough is familiar, we did the Rubenstein project just to the west of here and just slightly to the south. Obviously, this is the same reach of Goose Creek that comes down through, everyone knows that this area floods when it comes down through here. I think the one gentleman, um, earlier asked in public comment if we have considered what West Ocean is doing up on Montgomery Avenue. I did have a conversation, uh, with the township engineer there. West Ocean has a grant that they are going to try to expand that box culvert that's kind of behind Parkway and behind McDonald's. There's not a lot of room there to, I mean, there's, there's no ability to completely convey this, the 100-year storm in the culvert. So what they're really going to achieve is hopefully a little less water on the streets, but when we get to large flooding events, obviously everyone sees, the area that flows behind Taco Bell overwhelms the two existing 48 by 84-inch corrugated metal pipes. Once they get overwhelmed, we're then in a surface flow condition and it flows above that through the parking lot, along, along Market Street and then on this slide here, we don't show it, but it goes, um, in a different order. We highlight the area, but it also floods across Market Street and to the south. So similar to what we did for, uh, the Rubenstein, um, project to the, to the west, we've studied this floodplain. We do have the opportunity to put in a slightly larger culvert that would allow us to convey some more runoff through the area of the site instead of having the two 48 by 84-inch corrugated metal pipes that are kind of in disrepair and clogged up. We tried to put our pipe camera through it and we couldn't even really get through it, there's so much debris inside of it with sticks and trees and shopping carts. The box culvert, um, will be a slightly larger opening and will afford us the ability, we have two vaults on, on it at its turn and where it connects to market to allow us to be able to maintain and clean that. But more importantly, what it does for the floodplain is, right now, the existing buggy wash is actually outside of the studied 100-year floodplain. But the old, the old Carlson's, uh, building, the building that's to the rear of that or to the north and then the auto repair on the corner, those buildings are all situated in the floodplain. So when Goose Creek overwhelms that culvert and it flows down through, these become obstructions in the floodplain and they're contributing to shifting that flooding further across Market Street and further to the south down there. So in what we are proposing, in addition to one, increasing the size of that culvert from being those two corrugated metal pipes to a box, while that helps, what truly helps is getting those obstructions out of the calculated 100-year floodplain. So on this slide, it's kind of, for me, it jumps out, but we show in little purple, those are just all of the columns that are supporting our building. So the total area of them, and I, I quickly, we have it on our one sheet, we have about 14,000 square feet of obstruction in the floodplain existing today and we're going to go to about 700 square feet of obstruction, which makes a big difference. It ends up lowering the floodplain elevation significantly and slowing it down. There's no way for us to be able to get all of the water underground and not still have it go across the surface, there's just, it's just too much, you know? Unfortunately, the whole area upstream and everyone knows, I always get blamed, I did the, we did the LA Fitness. Everyone said, yeah, well, LA Fitness went in, Denny, you flooded the whole borough out. And we're like, no, probably everything got cleaned out up there when they did the LA Fitness. But, um, this is a, this is a huge improvement by putting in the box, especially because we don't really know how well this would function if, if it were cleaned out. And we can't really get in it to really clean it out, which is what really needs to be done. So having it as a box culvert, having these two ports that are on the plan right before we connect the markets reading, right where we change direction to be able to clean this out and maintain it will be, will be vitally important in addition to getting all of the, the structures that are in the floodplain now out of the floodplain.
Denny, should I just ask you two questions about the corrugated pipes and the box culvert?
Sure.
Just to make sure it's clear. The, the two corrugated pipes run under the site today, correct?
Correct.
And so with this project, they would be replaced with the larger single box culvert that would be concrete, right?
Yes, four and a half by 16.
And is there, is there a difference in terms of the, obviously that's a huge infrastructure improvement in and of itself, but is there a difference between the two corrugated pipes versus the box culvert in terms of the ability to function with ongoing maintenance?
Yeah, and that's what I was saying, we can obviously get to that box and maintain it more, get down inside of it, the pipes are, are not even accessible right now. Like I said, if, if they could be cleaned out, we'd probably get a dramatic improvement in what goes on there today, but.
Can I ask a question?
Yep. It is, it's under the building, yeah, and it's through that surface parking area that's under the building and it, the podium column spanned that box culvert.
How do you get, how do the rest maintain that, get into it?
Well, because that, that area, I know, it's kind of confusing. That area part of the building is, is accessible because that's where our driveway entrance is in there to get in there to park cars. So you can get a truck in there to open this up, I mean, unfortunately, no matter what, whether this was an open field, there's no way to get a piece of equipment down inside here, so just having like an access port to put a man down inside of, some of the handwork to get there and clean that. So just having like an access port to put a man down inside of, some of the handwork to get there and clean that thing out, that's really the only way to maintain it. This is not much different than Rubenstein's, although Rubenstein's, we actually surveyed. We could actually get up in the Rubenstein culvert and we surveyed our way up through there. And it was much more open than what these two pipes are today. That's like the 50,000-foot version of 100-year floodplain. Of course, we did a study. It was submitted to the Borough Engineer. They've done a review and we know we'll be working with them through that. But we luckily have the benefit of having studied Goose Creek all through here. I actually did the testimony for AutoZone. I didn't design it. Thank God, but I did the work on that.
What question? Are the corrugated pipes tend to catch things because they're corrugated? Is that right?
And because it's two holes rather than one.
And are they currently past their useful life or?
Yes.
They are?
That's a quick, I know we have a short timeframe, so I just was wanting to hit on.
Just a quick question about that. So is that an easement or is that something that's owned by the borough, the culverts? Or is that on the property and owned by whoever owns the property? Which existing?
What you're visiting is part of the borough's, the borough's stormwater. It's a stream in a pipe essentially to that. And that's what it would continue to be. It's just that, right now, you can't get in there to maintain it. Debris gets clogged in there because the pipes are corrugated. And then in addition to that, they're degrading. We don't know to what extent because we couldn't get in.
Get inside of them, yeah.
But this would enable the removal of those, the installation of a brand-new concrete box culvert that could be accessed and maintained moving forward.
I have sort of a very far-out concern of maintenance of our entire borough. And I am very concerned about things like rain gardens and cleaning out these culverts. Because, you know, we need to plan as a borough, not necessarily you guys specifically, but we need to plan as an entire group how we're going to do this very consistently. Because if we don't, we're going to end up in the same position. We're going to set ourselves up for this again. And we really need to be doing this. So I'm talking to you guys, but I'm also talking to Sean and everybody over there. This, I want this as much in writing and figured out, planned ahead, to be maintained. So I love all the rain gardens. All of this planning is beautiful and amazing, and I want it all to happen. But I also want to know what the six-months plan is, the five-year plan, the 10-year plan. I want to know how we're going to continue to maintain this and make sure it's all functioning moving forward.
Sheila, that's important. The first step is getting the infrastructure upgraded to have something that's maintainable.
To the extent that anything they're proposing is a BMP that's required under your stormwater ordinance, your stormwater ordinance already requires the developers to maintain that. And there's a stormwater management agreement that gets recorded with the plan that shifts all of the maintenance obligations to the developer and to the property owner in perpetuity. But what I'm confused about is the culvert. So Patrick, to answer your question, I think it depends on what the records show as far as, you know, past development plans. And what we've seen is that prior, like older subdivision plans, land development plans from the 70s and even the 80s weren't good about identifying, first of all, do they even show the pipes? And two, do they identify who owns the pipe? And three, do they say who maintains it? And in most cases with older developments, you don't have that information. But the DEP often takes the position that culverts and streams are the responsibility of municipality. But I think as part of this conversation, we're going to have to have a conversation about, once you replace that, if you replace that, I should say, those two corrugated pipes with this box culvert, well, then who's responsible for that? And that's something that I think, I agree with you, Sheila, is something that absolutely has to be a conversation and recorded in the chain of title to the property.
The problem, Kristen, after what you asked about Patrick, A, there's really no, there's your record to speak of. It's just, it's there and it's part of the stream system. So that, I mean, those are all good points that have to be, would have to be addressed.
But once built, that culvert would be maintained by the property owner.
That would have to be, that would have to be worked out, like Kristen's saying, during the land development process for the project. We don't know because there's no record today of, I mean, right now, it's really just part of the borough's streams. So we have to work that out. And Sheila is right, we'd have to have a plan for the future. But at least you'd have an infrastructure part of this. You know, West Ocean's doing what it's doing. You've got Rubenstein's project, which will upgrade this problematic conveyance system that we have with old infrastructure. And then you've got this, and the maintenance on it has to be worked out. But at least you'll have an infrastructure that's maintainable regardless of who does.
That's the biggest thing. Right now, it's almost not maintainable without putting a man down inside of there and confined space and trying to pull out everything that's in it, which is almost, is very difficult.
And Danny, would you agree that once it's in and new, it's not really that hard to maintain as long as you do it on a regular basis?
Yeah, we placed two concrete vaults, one right there, just north of Market Street where it goes across, and one at the change in direction with an access port so that you can get down in there and get a pipe truck in and vac it out. Because it would need, we have a pipe storage system. We're in West Ocean, of course, by the reservoir. And we maintain our pipe storage system. We try to once a year. And there's a massive amount of debris that gets sucked out of it. If you don't do it, it will eventually clog up, so.
Sheila, I think what you're saying, I just want, and I would be aligned to is, you know, we've got, you've named all these Rubenstein's. We've got Five Adam Street. We've got West Ocean. And we need to connect the dots and make sure strategically that we're not just protecting the properties that are being enhanced or built, but all the surrounding properties as well, right? And I agree that, you know, if we don't have document, or a precedent, so to speak, around, you know, because we don't have any documentation here, you know, we need to make sure going forward that we're protecting residents. You know, there's a lot of interest now in the East End, right? Because it's the only place that's undeveloped, quite frankly. So, and this is where all the water has gone historically.
I agree with you. You know, we have, where this, and Danny can show on here, where this outfalls, you've got some backup infrastructure on the other side of Market Street that also needs to be looked at and cleaned out. So that's something that's going to have to be considered as we progress because that's part of it as well.
Just want to make sure we're sharing the wealth, so to speak, right? And looking at it holistically and not piecemeal.
Yep.
One quick question, and Don, you can ask your question or your comment. You mentioned that the culvert's going to be slightly larger.
Yep.
And so is it sized for what's coming in or is it sized for what's on the site?
It's sized for basically the largest that we could fit in that area where it exists today that's more efficient. Unfortunately, we don't have the opportunity, really, no one does now, to put a culvert in that would convey what the flow is. So it's sized to be larger and to be as large as it can be to fit in the confines of what we've got because we still have to make the connection down to Market Street and then on down through, down to Rubenstein's. And there's just not the ability, unfortunately, to make it one large enough. You would really have a bridge to span this area. So it's larger, but really, that's not the real benefit. The real benefit is getting the obstructions out of the floodplain. That's really what is displacing the surface water that we're facing, that we're faced with being our only conveyance facility. Once it overwhelms the culvert, it's on the surface. And when there's buildings in the way, it can't go anywhere but out in the street and further. This is exactly, like I said, the AutoZone example. It was built up higher. And that was great for them, but then it ended up pushing all the flooding all the rest of the way. In this case, getting these obstructions out of the floodplain will be a big help. And it's a big, it's a large decrease, like 14,000 square feet of obstruction down to 780 square feet of obstruction. So you have all that surface now available for conveyance. Does that make sense? Yeah.
Mr. Edwards?
Since I've been here, I've been looking at Goose Creek hard. And I think I have some information that's relevant to the discussion. Whoever said that, you know, we got all these little different things going up and down Goose Creek, you know, all needs to be put together, 100% agree, okay? So one thing is, the last time Goose Creek was studied was over 50 years. There was a 2018 update, but there was never what's called a hydraulic analysis, an engineering study for the creek. And it's badly needed. When we went to West Ocean for their proposed hotel at 205 Carter Drive, they did a flood map revision. And they went out there and they did surveying. And they found out that the flood maps, including the surveying, are all messed up. And I totally believe that from what I've seen. So what we're talking about here ties into the overall plan, which is really needed. I've already emailed all of you on Mr. Cook's question. I'll say it here. As when West Ocean, they try to eliminate that bottleneck at Gay Street near Montgomery, they are going to have to do a flood study. And they are going to have to address the downstream impacts, including any mitigation of that. They might have to do some other improvements. I'm sorry if I'm confusing you, but there's just all this stuff. And I'd be happy to answer questions later if you have any questions. But nothing's, I mean, you don't just go in there and add box culverts. We've met with them once with West Ocean. We're going to meet with them again. I'm sure as there's more planning, more design before they actually do that project. But all these things tie together. I have asked in the budget, this is just preliminary and draft right now, but I've asked for a study that would go from Route 202 to Lacy Street for a hydraulic study. You start at the downstream end, you get things opened up, and then you move your way upstream. And all this work, including this right here, needs to be considered. I understand, I know that Dale Howe did some hydraulic work for Rubenstein's, like you mentioned. And so they've already done some of this. The engineer for that proposed hotel in West Ocean, they've already done some of this. And there's other work. And West Ocean's going to do it for Gay Street here. So I just want to, I guess, emphasize that this is a comprehensive issue. I think it's very solvable, you know? It just needs to be done the right way so that we connect all the dots. And that's kind of where we are. And it ties in with what we're talking about right here.
Mr. Edwards? A question. So are you suggesting that perhaps the builders here need to speak with West Ocean and speak with West Chester U on their projects and look at these hydraulic studies, the pieces of it that have been done, and do their own hydraulic study as well?
I would suggest that we need to coordinate all of this work, whether it's through a comprehensive study. Like I mentioned, I want to do from 202 to Lacy Street. I think there needs to be another part from Lacy Street back to past Gay Street. I think all of that needs to be coordinated. I understand there's flooding underneath the railroad bridge on Barnard Street. You know, that needs to be considered. So yes, I am suggesting that we do need like a comprehensive, coordinated plan that allows all this. And it's very doable, and I think it would be very productive for all the development that we're talking about. And it would, I'm very confident it would fix the flooding problems that we have.
I can tell you this. Having a business across the street from the buildings that were built for Leslie Pinkney Hill Commons Apartments, as much as whatever was decided by the borough then, I know it was a different borough manager and different leadership completely. But whatever was agreed upon was not sufficient. Because two things happened. One, they went to dig and then we had a rain. And then it took another month or two before they could dig again because the water filled up the hole so bad that they couldn't even sump pump it out.
Right.
And it stayed there for a month or more. Secondly, they've already had flooding this year over there. So whatever was done was not sufficient. And I think we need to look at those plans so that the minimum is not done this time. And I'm not suggesting you have planned the minimum. What I'm saying is, whatever that maximum looks like, it needs to happen. Because property around there, neighbors, including us, have been negatively impacted from the buildings. Because, you know, when they dug and when they used the jackhammer, you know, we believe that our foundation of our building was compromised because now we feel what are coming up through our concrete because we don't have a basement. And that has been since the building of these buildings. So whatever was done then, and I'd like us to look at that, to make sure that that's, we're doubling down our efforts to make sure that if this moves forward, it moves forward in the most judicious way possible.
Right. It's definitely, these projects are not going to fix the problem. They could, they could help it a little, they could hurt it a little. But the solution is what I believe I've said, which is you got to work downstream, work your way up. You cannot look at this individually. It's got to be as a whole. And, you know, I don't know if I sound arrogant or not, but I spent eight years in South Louisiana, where, you know, near New Orleans. And so, you know, I've seen a lot of drainage and I'm pretty confident that this is what is needed here.
And so to Sheila's point, we just have to make sure that, you know, all i's are dotted, t's are crossed, and everything possible. Because I've seen the water run down Market Street in waves.
Yep.
And meet the water from Worthington Street in waves to the point that it comes up on Worthington Street up onto our berm.
And the reason why that's happening.
In waves, like it's a.
Is what I'm saying. It's, you know, you got, like, we had a bunch of trees in Goose Creek down in West Ocean. We got them out. And I'm seeing evidence. I'm waiting for like a five-inch rain, but I'm seeing evidence that getting all those trees out of there has allowed the water to flow. And that's the kind of thing we need to do, up and down the creek, connect the dots. So that, you know, we have a comprehensive plan. Once Goose Creek is flowing without flooding, all this other stuff, I think it's going to clear up.
So how long does a study like that take?
Well, I would say probably about six months. I mean, the way that we have it planned right now, and actually, Mr. Klein from Pinoni is one of the two proposals we got, I would say probably about six months. And the first part would be just doing some surveying, running the computer model, seeing, you know, what the existing conditions are, you know, along that stretch of Goose Creek. And then they'll come back and they'll say, you know, your flood map, which I already know are messed up, okay? This is what your flood maps say. This is what the real data shows, okay? And like right now, the flood maps show that Greenfield Ball Field is like half-covered with water. I don't believe that that's correct. When you look at the surveying, it probably may be happening now, but that's only because of trees and everything. So, but so the first phase would be just like, here's our existing conditions. And then the second phase would be, hey, do we want to, do we want to design something? Do we want to go for grants, you know, to construct this thing? So that would be the sequence there, if that makes sense. Is that okay?
Record? I have a question.
For Mr. Howe, the, can you put back up the, where the pipe is supposed to look?
Are that, we can start there? Yep.
Okay. Working from there back to the other side of Market Street. Okay, going north in the market, under the ground?
Yes.
All right. Is the builder willing to clean that out as well? So we know that the new pipe and everything he's putting in there will have a clean run from, what, 25 feet, 30 feet, the width of Market Street? That way there, this side of the road is, we know it's, we did his side. We want to make sure that it's contiguous all the way through.
Yeah, it's something that we've been looking into. We are actually trying to get some costs from some subs through the Howe guys, so.
Now, looking at those pipes right there, they're corrugated. So as Mr. Nagel was saying, the corrugated stuff is not good.
Right.
So to Ms. Dorsey's point, to the mayor's point, to Mr. Edwards's point, we're going to fix stuff on the other. to fix stuff on the other 25 feet away. It's going to start, is it going to start getting clogged on our side that we're going to be responsible for?
Well, and.
Right, yeah, right there. Right there, and then you got 25 feet across the street.
Right, right there.
Which is all corrugated.
Right.
So I was, I was going to say, you have to be careful while, while we definitely can fix the problem, and I can study the whole floodplain and as you, as the previous gentleman suggested, we have already studied a lot of this reach and FEMA does this at a very high level. So not to say that our maps are wrong, but they're not getting the survey data and the base information that we get when we're surveying on the ground. The problem becomes, while we can solve, what we're going to find out when we study this whole reach or whoever does it is that everything is undersized. And that's why we're seeing everything on the surface because as soon as these subsurface facilities get overwhelmed.
Did you say that again to the mayor?
Yep.
Everything is under.
Everything is undersized.
Yeah, okay.
It is. And in, and in the days of PennDOT for all the roads, PennDOT doesn't design for the 100-year storm. Most roads are 10 or 25. I-95 is still a 50-year storm. So when we start applying 100-year storm flows to existing stormwater pipes in existing roads from maybe 50 years ago, they're all undersized. And the reason that we know they're undersized, not just by calculation, but we're, we're seeing all the surface water, right? Once all those underground pipes can't handle any more flow, the water has nowhere to go but on the surface. But the problem is that there is some inherent stormwater management that is existing by that. So while I would agree, it would be ideal to study it all the way up behind the Kmart and start opening up areas. You are introducing much more flow and what we call the time of concentration, the time for it takes the furthest raindrop that hits the ground at the hydraulically most distant point to flow. So that's when you have people that are downstream in the reach who maybe don't get as flooded out. Maybe the water dissipates by then, but as we, while I don't disagree, it would be ideal to increase all of those reaches and all of those pipes. We are then introducing the ability for water to get downstream runoff to get downstream faster. So it is like kind of opening up a Pandora's Box. While I, it's not ideal to try to do ones in between, the reality of it is as we increase the pipe sizes, and I talked to Brian Kolakowski at West Goshen, I know him well, about Montgomery Avenue and just said, what are you looking to achieve back there? Because are you going to be punting more water down into the borough? Because if you are, like, we're going to have something to say about it. The Rubenstein's culvert is designed a certain way, but but the reality of it is whether that that culvert is one size or another, it's getting overwhelmed. Water is then going across the surface and finding its way, but it's going there at a slower rate. If we keep it all underground and we keep it all in a pipe or all in a channel, it's going to get there faster, which is totally fine from an engineering perspective, but it will result in more water getting downstream. As the borough knows, all these storms that we've, that we've received, and I've sat on the board of the Chester County Water Resources Authority for 16 years, and we've sat there and decided, do we redefine the 100-year storm? You know, do we, because we're getting all these storms. We don't get them every 100 years. We get them like every summer or a couple of times a summer. But what we're really getting is not more rain, we're getting more rain faster. So instead of getting seven inches of rain in 24 hours, we're getting like six and a half inches of rain in three hours. So it's the intensity and the frequency. And if we, if you start to create the ability for that water to be conveyed more efficiently downstream, it is going to, it will just continue its problem as it goes downstream. So it's a very tough problem to solve. It's not a hard problem to study it and not a hard problem for us to be like, this is oversized, this is undersized, that's undersized, and maybe there's improvements that can be made within the reach, but just wholesale making that whole reach better. As you go downstream, it's kind of like being in the city of Coatsville and being at the bottom end of the Hibernia Dam. I mean, the area down there where the flats is, that area can be washed out and Luke and Steel gone if that flow could all get down there unobstructed. So it, it's a, it's a tough problem.
I'm glad, I'm glad to hear the developers willing to look at cleaning out so his system works properly.
Yes.
The extra 25 feet and then our team can probably take over from there. Thank you.
When he walked up, I said, just say yes, because that's like one of the biggest things is to have that, have that area to be able to be maintained. Right now, it's getting zero maintenance.
Thank you.
So that's what you proposed to do. I know that Mr. Edwards was talking about the 205 Matt Lex Creek Hotel. They did a Clomar. Does this project have any map revisions with FEMA?
It would. It would.
Yeah, because we signed it.
Okay.
Yep.
So I don't very understand that and I don't fully understand it either, but as what he said.
FEMA maps are not always based on studied and surveyed lines, but when you do, when a project comes in and they actually survey it and can tell you where the floodplain lines are, they submit that information to FEMA and then that is a letter, what's called a letter of map revision. So then it actually, if FEMA studies that and agrees with your survey information, they then, that effectively changes the flood map boundaries on this particular property. So as part of this process, that's something that they would be doing. They would be submitting that studied floodplain to FEMA and then if FEMA agrees, it would change the designation and the boundaries of the floodplain as it relates to this property. So that's a benefit in terms of then you really have a studied floodplain. It's not just based on what a FEMA map 50 years ago estimated it to be.
Correct.
Council, any other questions?
Yeah, what, so does FEMA, do they redo the map based off of the proposed future plan and is it only for that property or are they redoing the map for all the areas surrounding the property?
Yep, they would, yep, that's a good question and they would, they would, in theory, they will revise their map. They don't revise it as often as we would like them to be revised, but there's, at the county, we have a great GIS website, but they may not revise the map. When you go into the actual flood profile, you can click on it, you can see that there was a Loma, a letter of map amendment or a Clomar, and you can click on that and then you can see the study and then you get the benefit of seeing that that section, that reach was studied of the stream. Like I said, I don't disagree, it would be ideal to study the whole reach, but we would study it and see that everything's undersized and the solution would not be an easy one without introducing more water downstream.
Danny, just to follow up.
Faster.
Question, if, for this project in particular, it would result in getting the, the new studied area that would be dictated on the FEMA map and it also results in a reduction of the overall floodplain?
It does, yep. It reduces both the flood elevation and the width of the floodplain there as well because it's being conveyed more efficiently.
And I think your question was, that's after, so they study it and say, okay, with these proposed changes, taking down the three buildings that they've described as obstructions and replacing it with a proposed development, they provide the information as to what they believe the floodplain will look like. And then after it's built, they have to send in the supporting survey information to demonstrate that that really happened and then that's when FEMA officially changes their flood map.
Okay, yeah.
Makes sense, Danny? Did I say that right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Along with that, though, my question was, does that only happen for the property or will that happen? So it's not going to happen for like milestones or, yeah, or it's, it's just the property? So the impacts to the rest of the area around, going back to what Lisa and everybody was saying, could, maybe the map won't be updated, but in fact their floodplains get worse? Okay, got it.
And that's, that's a fair statement. So we're required by FEMA to show, to demonstrate that we are not increasing the flood elevation off, off of our property, whether it be downstream or whether it be on either side of it. So if you imagine, if let's say we were in here proposing to fill in the whole floodplain with our building and not do it that way, it will be impossible for me to show by calculation that I'm not shifting the floodplain across Market Street and to the south onto that property that, down there. So that's, but there's no way to show without starting the whole reach, what the effects are all the way downstream. We have to be able to show that we are not increasing the flood elevation off of our property on anyone else's property, if that makes sense.
Maybe Nate could help on this. Nate, isn't that a requirement too for the special exception, that they have to demonstrate that whatever they're proposing won't increase the flood elevation? So that's a special exception criteria that your own ordinance requires them to demonstrate? And your, your own engineer would have to review what they've provided to see if they concur with that evaluation?
Correct. So really, the next step here, guys, is going to be zoning hearing board, variances, special exception necessary for the proposed features in the floodplain. As part of that, they'll be doing the FEMA study, we'll be reviewing that, ultimately FEMA will review that, they'll get a conditional approval, then later they'll get a final approval if and when it gets built and constructed properly. So multiple steps have to happen here, but ultimately they have to prove for our code as well as the FEMA that they're not increasing the vertical height of that flood nor the horizontal distance of that flood. And so far, based on the initial information, you know, we've done our initial review of that, that's the case in both, both situations. That flood height gets dropped, that flood width gets narrower. So positive step in the right direction in that regard, in addition to the improvement and the maintenance of that culvert, so.
So has that preliminary study been, been done in conjunction with what West Goshen's doing? What Rubenstein's doing?
This would, no, they, they stand alone. Like we said, Don had mentioned maybe a regional type study, which is a great idea, we gave him a proposal for, which I would love to see you guys budget for 25. But these projects are done more in a vacuum on each individual site and ultimately they're not really interconnected that way. It's somewhat kind of counterintuitive, but that, that's how the project process works with FEMA.
For me, that's where the challenge is, right?
Yep.
We're, we're, we're not making it worse, so we say, but we're also not making it better.
We're making, I would argue that we're making incremental improvements. No, I think it's fair to say we are making aspects of the system better, both the Rubenstein site, this site, if they were to be implemented, would be absolute improvements to the Goose Creek system.
I would argue that you haven't made it better, particularly with Leslie Pinkney Hill, because before it was a big field, it was grass, it could absorb the rain, it was sloshy, but it absorbed much of the groundwater. Now that water sits on the surface and, and it goes into garages and it goes into the street and it goes into other buildings in the neighborhood basements. So now, not yet, we haven't made it better, but to answer, I just have two questions for you, sir. One, would you, have you reached out to West Goshen or West Chester U in terms of their projects is my primary question, or would you be willing to if you have not? And B, are, have you done the testing that they have done? And if not, would you be willing to?
Yeah, and I, and I did reach out to the town's engineer of West Goshen and spoke to him about that culvert because I was interested in what they were doing. I was like, were you, you know, I didn't really think, going back there a lot, that there's much room for them to add. So they're adding a slightly bigger culvert, but it's not, all it's going to really achieve for them is that it will be an easier thing to, to maintain and it will take some extra water off the street. And the biggest concern there, as you probably all know, is that that's the road that goes to the hospital. So they don't want that area flooding, so they don't have the opportunity to completely keep the stream encased in the culvert because there's just not enough physical room, there's not enough height, but they'll keep a little bit more water off the street and then the ambulance can, can go through there. But either way, it doesn't have any effect on our study or what's going on because it's not that it's adding, it's not conveying more water down, it's just going to basically take some more water and keep it in the culvert and have less water on the surface. But like I said before, as soon as that culvert gets overwhelmed, then we're faced with surface water being the only way to convey the runoff. That's why we see the flooding on the streets.
Did you, did you answer my second question?
Yeah, I'll, I'll definitely coordinate with Brian about what they do and the size of it.
And that, nothing's been done. They, all they did was apply for a grant. So they, if they don't get a grant, there's no project. So they were just applying for a grant to then hire an engineer to do a design. So that's the only conversation they've had to date. There's been absolutely no design and it won't be the in-house engineer, it'll, they'll hire an outside expert.
So if you do get this grant, you'd be willing to do that, that other test? Okay.
Okay, so I think we're underselling what this project can do by itself, okay? We, we can't connect all the flood elevations upstream and downstream, but they can size the culvert through there so that it does not adversely impact the floods. So, so we've got some corrugated metal pipe in there and I see you've got a box culvert that's proposed. Well, they can do their little drainage study to say, okay, we know we got so much water coming from upstream and this is sized appropriately so that it does not increase the water level. So standing alone, this project can, can design, be designed so that it does not adversely affect flood elevations. So it's, I think it's better than what we thought.
Yeah, and I would, I would just agree. Yes, I would agree. And we do show by calculation that Nate had indicated they review, we do show that we do lower the flood elevation compared to what it is today and thereby also narrow the flood elevation. So it is improved, but it's just not the ability to take it all on our ground.
And, and just, just, just further to that point, I talked earlier about the fiscal impacts, th- those did not include like the, this culvert improvement that goes with this project in and of itself is probably about a million dollars. So you're talking about significant infrastructure improvements in addition to significant fiscal impact that would give the borough the ability to continue to deal with some of these issues moving forward once the project is, is completed. So with all of that, if you have any further questions, we're happy to answer them, but the, at the end of the day, the bottom line is, we're looking for your support for this project for the reasons that we reviewed tonight. Thanks for giving us the time to.
Thank you.
Present it to you.
One question, Mr. Howe. Mr. Danny Howe, I got one question from you. Since you, you're working on this project here and you're, you're making sure that the, the floodplain is shrinking and you've also done Rubenstein's, okay, for, for us or for the developer. Have you looked at the increased flow from Market Street down to Rubenstein to see if it's large enough to accept a lot more water than it currently is?
Well, there's no increased flow, there's decreased flow.
Okay.
Luckily, so, and that's, you know, by virtue of your ordinance and what we're required to do, we can't, I can't increase the flow that's going down there, so there's less flow. You know, we didn't, Pete had gotten, oops, I guess I'm offline here. I think, I think I have battery. We have a stormwater management area that's within, just go backwards, back to the, to the amenity area in the center of the, of the building that's green. There you go. Our, our stormwater management is in this open courtyard, so where today there's really zero stormwater management out there. We'll, we'll detain and manage the runoff from our new impervious surface while we're then also simultaneously conveying that water down through. So we're, we're not allowed or permitted to increase the amount of runoff downstream. So with there being less obstructions and better conveyance, then as it goes down through Rubenstein's, it will be less water.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thanks very much.
Thank you very much. Have a nice evening.
Okay, item number six, old business. Item A, approved July 16 and 17, 2024 Borough Council Meeting Minutes. Any comments or questions? I can consent that. Number seven, new business from Borough Council, August Committee Meetings and other new business. Item A, Administration, Communication and Technology.
Yeah, so A1, the first item here is a motion to amend the open records request policy. Currently, we get a flood of, of right-to-know requests that either are anonymous or generated by bots and this amendment would change the intake process for those right-to-know requests to eliminate those two problems and reduce administrative expenses significantly. This was a 3-0 committee recommendation to move to the consent agenda.
Any questions? Consensus, move that to consent? Okay, item two?
Yes, the next item here was motion to direct a solicitor to prepare draft ordinance to create a Westchester Borough Transportation Committee. This has been discussed a couple of times in council and in work sessions and a couple of times also in the ACT Committee. This was kicked back to ACT Committee last month to answer a couple of questions. The first question was regarding circulation, circulator buses from Westchester University to understand whether or not residents would be allowed to use those buses initially when this was proposed. Residents were told that we could also use those because they were circulating through the neighborhood based on contractual liability and safety issues. That's not the case, so they're, they're essentially exclusive or only inclusive to Westchester University students. The second question was regarding the committee that we already currently have, which is the Railroad Restoration Committee and whether or not a Transportation Advisory Committee would conflict or how they would partner together potentially or whether the Restoration Committee, the Railroad Restoration Committee would be dissolved and the work would be picked up within the, the recommended committee here. And the recommendation that, the answer to that question was, these two committees should both exist, but there should be a point person or liaison that would attend meetings of both the Transportation Advisory Committee as well as the Railroad Restoration Committee to make sure that communication flow is happening and, and we're coordinating all efforts.
Yeah.
So this wasn't, yep, this was another. So this was, yep, this was another committee recommendation 3-0 to, to, to move through.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Any public comment, questions? Okay, we have consensus to move that to consent. B, the Parking Committee, item one.
This is about moving the Lot 10 lease. Sort of phasing it out and moving it to a fully transient public lot.
I just wanted to say, I know this says approve a lease, but I, I don't think, we don't have a current lease and I don't want to continue, I don't want to create a lease for this. So I think that was, I, I probably should have represented this differently and just said continue allowance of usage for the three spaces at Lot 10 until the leases are extinguished. So if we could modify that, if this forward, that would make the most sense.
Okay, good. Motion to schedule a public hearing for September 18th amendment.
Please hold, hold on just one minute. Yeah, so let's, let's reword that so we can move it to, to consent. So.
It would be to permit the owner to continue to lease the three spaces at Lot 10 for so long as they have contractual obligations and their leases to do so.
Okay, yes.
The owner rec, advised us that they entered leases guaranteeing those three spaces for the term of whatever their leases are with those three property, you know, those three spaces. And they're, and they're not doing it under any sort of a lease arrangement. They're just obtaining the permit on a monthly basis and paying it on a monthly basis.
Okay, we're clear on the language for, for moving it. Okay, thank you.
Isn't it important that we know those dates of when those leases expire?
I, I'm not sure if Mr. Nagel provided them, but we will get them. I know we did the same thing for the Cheston House and we do have those dates as well. So.
And we did ask for them so we can make sure that we obtain those. And when we document that, we will have those dates listed.
Exactly.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions on that? Rewrite and put that on, on consent. Item two.
A motion to schedule a public hearing for September 18th for Amendment Chapter 10467 Vehicles and Traffic. This is about the meters and more consistent enforcement hours for borough-owned lots. It was 3-0 recommendation.
Okay, questions, comments from anyone? Any public comment? All right, consensus, move that to consent. Item three.
Motion to approve the Chester County lease for Gay Street Lot Number Six and to discuss renewal with the County of Chester for 79 spaces at the current market rate of $95 per space. Currently is 60. Again, 3-0.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Public comments, questions? All right, we can move that to consent, please. C, Public Works Committee, item one.
Good evening. We discussed the, the totes and dumpsters in Chapter 62 in the borough because there's a plethora of trash cans that are not designated totes. So what we did was we met with the director of, the president of the Department of Association, the committee did. And we're going to come back and present to our solicitor our recommendation that we can amend Chapter 62 at a later date with better verbiage and because totes are not mentioned at all. There's the picture. Totes are not mentioned anywhere in the 62 as well as storing the totes after they've been, the trash has been picked up. So we're going to, we're going to work as a team and come back another month or so and ask that we revise Chapter 62.
Okay, so there, there's no vote to be taken here?
No, we're, we're gonna move
Have it moved to September?
It's September, yeah.
Okay. Item two.
Item two, the, there are going to be five different vehicles going into enterprise leasing. Three patrol cars, one car for the police chief and one car for public, the parking department. And that was, we're going to be putting them through enterprise leasing. Mr. Edwards presented it to us and we recommend that we, we move forward because it takes almost a year, year and a half to get the vehicles.
Mr. Flynn, I'm showing four vehicles.
There's a C lease, 225 Explorer. We have three interceptors and Nissan Leaf. So you got three interceptors, one for parking and one for the chief.
Okay, thank you.
That's right, over to your left.
I just, I think, I think we're right with the number of five, as, as five. There is a electric vehicle for building and housing, a Nissan Leaf. There are three vehicles for the police department. Two of them are patrol. One of them is either detective or admin. And the fifth vehicle is a truck for public works that'll be
Ford F-350.
Well, well, here it says, here it says
To handle.
It says a Ford Explorer.
Yeah, I, I'm showing a police interpreter and Ford F-350, Ford Explorer and a Nissan Leaf.
Yeah, under 1382, it says three, three cars. Police administration gets three of them. The chief gets one and one goes to parking. Mr. Edwards, am I making a mistake on that? Because that's what's in the attachments. There's the one for the chief, I believe, the, the Explorer.
It's my understanding it's three for the police department, one for building and housing and one for public works. And I, I believe all of the attachments were uploaded for the committee and I assume they were uploaded here.
The, so the Explorer is actually going to building and housing, that one? Even though Josh Lee's name's on it? Right there. It's up on, it's up on the wall.
Oh, Explorers are police cars.
Okay.
The F-350 is the public works car and the Nissan Leaf is the building and housing car.
Okay, that's.
No, no, thank you. Yeah, I, I, I had thought there were, there was four, so I missed the other Explorer then.
There's five total.
It's exactly what
Yeah, there's five total.
Yes, there is.
We know there's an electric car going to parking.
Yeah.
Right? And we know we got three police cars.
Yes.
That's four.
Yeah.
Which one's going to building and housing?
I think it's going to be the Nissan Leaf going to building and housing. And then the F-350 is going to be, end up being the litter truck for public works. And the interceptors are going to the police department.
There you go.
Got it. Perfect.
It's all done.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I really totally confused everybody, but thank you very much.
No, no, I, I didn't know because I, I had on my notes just one, but.
Yeah, because the when, when I see the truck no uplift included for, for litter, I, I just assumed that was something else. So, okay, but we got that straightened out. And the next one was the Next Gen HVAC Maintenance Agreement.
So we're going to move to, to consent, please. Thanks. Item three.
Yeah, it could take almost over a year to get the, the vehicles or closer to a year. So. A motion to approve amendment to Next Gen HVAC Maintenance Agreement. We use that right now in Borough Hall and they want to continue it down at Taylor Run as well.
Questions, comments?
I, I just think we get some efficiencies out of using the same contractor that was one of the, that was one of the benefits of, of moving to this agreement.
Any public comment or questions? Thank you. Looks like we can move that to consent. Public Safety, Advancing Quality of Life Committee.
Really, we just had approval of special events. So Unite for Her, it's a 5K, it's a returning event. We had Fiorenza's who has graciously taking over the chili kickoff, cook-off. So that will be happening in the fall. And then Oktoberfest Beer Hall, which is a new event, was all approved 3-0.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Public questions or comments? All right, looks like we can move that to consent. Number two, the Civil Service Commission.
Two, the police, the police department is not fully staffed. So we'd like to start the civil service testing again. And that also was approved 3-0. I think we have a full, full 44 and we're at 41.
Questions or comments? Any public questions or comments? All right, looks like we can move that to consent. Smart growth.
All right, this motion was to direct solicitor to draft amendments to Chapter 112, Zoning, and Chapter 97, Subdivision and Land Development Ordinances, Preliminary Subdivision Submissions and Definitions, Building Height. So if you recall, a couple of months ago, we were provided a recommendation from the Planning Commission regarding how to measure the heights of new developments. And the questions came up just to make sure that our, our team understood what these directions were. And so both Sean and Sally went to the Planning Commission meetings, talked with the, the team there, the, the committee members and, and got a better understanding of, of what they were proposing. And they, they're good with it. They, Sean gave us a thumbs up last meeting. Can we get another thumbs up? Okay, all right, good, good. So the, the idea is that there would be a midpoint. Depending on the slope of the, the property, there's a midpoint of that, that street. And you would start the measurement from that midpoint and then the building would, the height would be measured based off of that one point in time. As opposed to right now, we're doing like every foot or something. I don't remember exactly, but every, how many? Every 10 feet. Yeah. So, so technically you could have a building, if you're on a steep slope, you could have a building that is actually taller from a, if you're standing on the end, the building itself could be taller than our record, our foot height because it's being measured actually from the middle of the street, not the bottom of the street. But on the other end, you could have a building height that's actually, if you're standing there, technically shorter than our height because again, it's measured by the middle of the street, not the top of the street. But what that would do is kind of create a level playing field of the building height and the goal being to try to match up with the building surrounding it. Did, did I get that? Any more that you want to add? Am I missing something?
This is a, this is a great example of how difficult it is to interpret zoning language because it's very difficult to put these spatial concepts into words and then your zoning officer takes it and interprets it. My, the way I think about it is a reference plane, a flat reference plane is established for every site at an elevation that's somewhere in the middle of the high and low points of the site. And from that flat imaginary plane, you measure up whatever the vertical distance is in the zoning district. Some districts it can be 45, some districts it can be 75. And no part of the building can protrude above that imaginary reference plane of building height. So Nicole is correct. On the down slope sides of sites, you might be looking at, you might experience a building that's a little bit taller than the building height limit in the district. And when you stand on the uphill side of a slight, of a site, you would experience the very same building is looking shorter than the building height limit in the district.
But we as a committee were good with it and so we're recommending moving forward. Any questions from anybody else? Any?
Public questions or comments? All right, we can move that to consent. And moving on to Finance and Revenue Committee.
Yes, motion to approve defined contribution 401A Plan Amendment. This is as, as a result of the Auditor General's findings by removing loan plan, loan plan provisions in the defined contribution plan. That was a 3-0 recommendation.
Comments or questions? Okay, public comments or questions? Move that to consent, please. Item two.
Yes, item two, motion to sponsor the Westchester Downtown Foundation Preservation Awards, which is taking place on October 17th at the Chester County History Center. And basically this goes to projects and individuals that have been awarded to maintain the historic character of Westchester.
I, one question, i- is that a, a financial sponsorship or in kind or what?
We, we, we've done this before. And bar.
It's a yearly thing that's in our comprehensive plan.
So in the past, traditionally we have approved this year after year. And this year it's a financial donation of $900.
Great, thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? Public comments or questions? Move that to consent, please. Item three. A Lincoln SUV.
Does somebody need to charge their car?
We have two more motions, you know, under finance.
Yes, motion to approve purchasing request. Delaware Valley, excuse me, Delaware Environmental Construction Services. That is for the Spring Tree Planning, $26,115. Item B, Horgan Tree Experts, $10,280. That's tree pruning in parks, historical society and other places. Univar Solutions, $13,155 and 25 cents. That's soda ash removal at Taylor Run. Usalco, $12,540. That's phosphorus removal. And enterprise leasing schedule, which we've already discussed for the five cars. That was unanimous 3-0.
Any comments or questions? Public comments, questions? All right, we can move that to consent, please. Is there any other business?
Yes. So I just went to Westchester's night out. It had to be rescheduled and I'm taking a page out of Dana's book. And I brought us each of you pretzels back.
I, I wish you had that earlier.
You waited till the end?
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, is there any other business? Okay, seeing none. We are adjourned at 7:58. Thank you.